All right, good evening, everyone. We're going to call the school committee meeting to order. The time is 6:00 PM. Today is Monday, October 1st. Our next meeting will take place on Monday, November 5th at 6:00 here at the senior center. For those that are new, what we're going to do first is salute our flag, recite the pledge of allegiance, and then we will have a moment of silence for all those who have fought for our country and continue to do so today. We will then have our clerk call the roll to ensure that we have a quorum sufficient to meet tonight, and then we'll get into tonight's agenda. The agenda consists of the approval of the minutes, followed by public comment, then the superintendent will speak on what's happening in the district, we'll then have a subcommittee report, there's three motions, and then we'll have personal privilege, and then we'll move to adjourn. So if there's no questions, I'd ask everyone to please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of all those who have fought for our country and continue to defend it today. Clerk will now call the roll.
May I question?
Here.
Mr. Drummond.
Here.
Mr. Drumm.
Yeah.
Mr. Iavino.
Here.
Ms. Leon.
Here.
Mr. LaRosa.
Here.
Ms. Batafor.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Anderson.
Here. All right, so we have a quorum sufficient to conduct business. Let's jump to item number one, approval of the minutes from September 17th, 2018. Motion by Mr. Iavino, seconded by Ms. Bordnarro. Any questions on those? Everybody's had a chance to look them over. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. The minutes of September 17th are adopted unanimously. Item number two on our agenda tonight is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the school committee. We were just asked that you come to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record, and please keep your remarks to a minimum couple of minutes, no more than five. Public comment is now open.
Good evening, Mayor Christensen and the members of the Malden School Committee. My name is Jessica Harrelson. While I am not a Malden resident, I am a teacher with the Malden Public Schools, and that is why I'm speaking here today. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I urge the school committee to unreservedly recommend that the Massachusetts Legislature fully fund our public schools today. Instead of only pointing out the raw numbers, $17 million underfunded annually for the Malden schools alone, I would like instead to imagine the possibilities for each of these millions for Malden's children. Just imagine what $17 million could do for teaching and learning in our school. For example, we might have an additional social worker for that student who is in pain. We could have additional classroom aides for those kindergarten inclusion classes that are already full. We could have more teachers so that Malden High School, our students are not languishing, and one, and sometimes two, direct study halls per day. We could have more teachers in general. Speaking as a high school teacher, I know that some math and science classes are exceeding 30 students in the high school, some of the language classes exceeding 35. Imagine what we could do with more teachers in every department so that our students have the class sizes that they deserve. Imagine being able to have a librarian in every K-8 again, and more guidance counselors to help our students dream and realize their future. These are just some ideas I would have for what to do with those $17 million. Yet these ideas encompass a social and moral debt the Massachusetts Legislature owes our city. I'm reminded of the quote, "Budgets are moral documents that we fund what we value." Imagine what we could do if the state of Massachusetts fulfilled its promise to truly fund the schools our community deserves. Please do the right thing and pass the resolution today to urge the state legislature to fully fund our future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address the school committee can do so now.
Good evening, Mayor Christensen, Superintendent O'Terry, and members of the school committee. Tonight, I stand before you to ask that you not only support the resolutions before you regarding fully funding public pre-K to 12 education and public higher education, but that you join the educators and community members, students and families, to actively advocate for a change to the foundation budget formula in the legislature. The time has come for all of us to stand up and put action to our words. $17 million, that is the amount of money the state is underfunding the Malden Public Schools and the students in our schools by, $17 million annually. With $17 million more dollars, we could provide so many services for our students instead of continuing to try and figure out how to do more and more with less and less. With $17 million more dollars in our school budget, we could enhance our students' chances for success by resourcing all schools with enough teachers so students have smaller class sizes, resourcing schools with more education support professionals and inclusion classes for the support our students need and deserve, being able to create community support services, make district programs available at all school sites instead of only specific schools, add more student adjustment counselors and guidance counselors so they are available to students who need increased access to them, we could resource all of the K through 8 schools with their own librarians, and we could make sure that the high school has enough staff so no student needs to be assigned to a study hall. I'm sure we could put our heads together and come up with many, many more ideas. The state owes it to our students to fully fund our schools. Our students need it, our students deserve it. It is time for us to stand up and demand that public education from pre-K through higher ed is fully funded. If not now, when?
Thank you. All right, anybody else wishing to address the school committee? Step right up.
Hello, my name is Matthew Bach. I live on 163 Glenwood Street in Malden. I'm a resident, and I think what is being asked of the committee as far as this resolution goes is fundamentally part of your charge, which is to make sure that the state is abiding by its foundation budget. This is a foundation budget. This is not some sort of extravagant luxury item. This is what the state has promised to provide, and I think it's the duty of the Malden School Committee to make sure that the state is making good on that obligation. And beyond that, we're talking about $17 million as an investment in the city, it's an investment in everybody's property, it's an investment in the civic pride of Malden, it's an investment in the Malden Commons. And this doesn't even begin to address the social theft that is occurring because of the corporation of Mystic Valley and what they're perpetrating on the community. This is a very basic, foundation-level ask, and the Constitution of the Commonwealth says that we will cherish public education, that we will go that far. This is not a huge thing to do, but it is tremendous in terms of its statement to the state legislature, which has failed to fulfill its obligation at this point.
Okay, thank you. Okay, public comment remains open. Okay, hearing none, we're going to close that portion of the agenda. If there be no objection, why don't we take out of order the resolution in support of full funding for public schools? Does the chair hear objection? Chair hears none. So let's go to Ms. Beardsley to talk about this resolution.
Do you have a copy?
Yeah.
You have a copy? Okay. Okay, so I wanted to make a motion in support of the resolution for fully funding public schools.
Okay, is there a second just to get it up on the table? Seconded by Ms. Bordnarro.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Beardsley, everybody's had a chance to look at it. Do you want to describe it a little bit or just take questions at this point?
Yeah, I think we can take, I mean, I think...
Do you want to read it?
Do you want me to? There's two of them.
Please, sure.
Okay.
Well, let's go, let's just take up the one about the public schools. We'll come back later on the other one.
Resolution in support of fully funding public schools. Whereas free public schools available to all students without exception are foundational to our democracy and are required by the state constitution, and whereas all of our students, no matter what, no matter their zip code, deserve high-quality public schools that teach the whole child and provide them with a rich school experience that addresses their academic, social, and emotional needs, whereas the state's foundation budget formula, which determines state aid to each district, has been woefully out of date for years, thereby underfunding our districts by more than $1 billion a year for essential educational services, and whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring Malden up to $17,2,673 in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move closer to providing all students with the education to which they are entitled as residents of the Commonwealth, and whereas the legislature failed to pass any foundation budget legislation in the last session, leaving districts, educators, and students without the funds necessary to support the schools our students deserve in every district in the state. Therefore, be it resolved that the Malden School Committee urges the legislature to approve and fully fund a new foundation budget formula by May 1st, 2019.
Okay, there you have it. Let's hear from our school superintendent, and then we'll turn it back to the committee members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would echo the voices that were raised by our public comment. I think that the, it is, in the words of one of our speakers, a moral contract that is in effect with our legislatures to our cities and towns, and most importantly, to our students, that everybody have a funding formula that is fair and equitable. When education reform came in in 1992, that foundational budget was funded, and it was in, at that time, that I think the playing field was about as level as it could be. And what has happened over the last 25 years, and in particular, the last decade-plus where the foundational budget wasn't funded, is those gaps, and the Department of Ed is very aware of them, you know, painfully aware of them, that they continue to adjust the accountability system to address those gaps. That gap just gets accentuated and made wider because places like Malden and most of our urban communities are woefully underfunded, and we're compared to often our suburban neighbors as to why their levels of student achievement are higher. Well, I think we've heard from two members of our education team that spoke publicly, where we have so many high demands and needs that we're not able to even reach the fundamental funding of some of our class sizes and some of the programming, such as librarians, such as additional teaching staff to alleviate high classes. We have studies at the high school. We want to know why we're not making strides at the high school or when our kids aren't fully scheduled because we don't have the staffing to do it. That's part of the reason for that. So I would urge the committee, I think we've heard some impassioned pleas on this, I know that there is some activity at the legislature, but we can't keep waiting because, in the words of Martin Luther King, "Justice delayed is justice denied," and we need to fund this.
Thank you, Superintendent. Anybody else have any questions? So, Ms. Beardsley, it would be the intent if it were to be adopted tonight that it would go to our delegation?
Yes.
Okay. Is everybody clear on that? It would go to our three House representatives and our state senator? Let's hear from Ms. Batafor.
Just to echo what the superintendent said, as well as our public comment, the last time we met as a committee, our vice chair told us that our student enrollment is 6,639. Divide $17 million by that, and that's giving each one of our students, doing the math quickly, $2,500 to add to their education. Now imagine that in your own household, what you could do with $2,500 and just give that to one individual child, and how much of an impact that would make, you know? So, just, it has to, we have to be a voice, and we have to be loud.
Right, okay. Well said. All right, anybody else? All right, I don't think we need a roll call. Let's, all those in favor, say aye of the resolution?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That carries unanimously. All right, let's go back to the docket, and we're now at item three, the superintendent's report. He's going to give an update on the Tornado Travelers Club, and he's also going to report on district updates and highlights. Superintendent O'Terry.
Sure, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to call up the Tornado's Travelers Club to make a brief presentation. We have proposed trips for February of 2020 to Belize and in April of 2020 to London and Paris. So I'd like to call on Ms. Sarah Jones, and I think Shawna Campbell's here, along with a couple of our students who can give some personal anecdotes to this. These are trips that we know have quite an impact on a student's life, but there's an educational connection on both of these that is interdisciplinary, and I'd like the committee to hear and understand why the proposed trips are, that they're not just vacations, they're learning experiences, and we've partnered with an exceptional tour company to assist us with this, so.
Great, thank you. My name is Shawna Campbell. I am one of the advisors.
I'm Sarah Jones. I am the other advisor as well, and these are two students we brought with us who went on a tour last year.
Okay. Introduce yourself.
I'm Salma Bazat. I'm a senior at Malden High.
My name is Sebastian Romani, and I'm also a senior at Malden High.
Okay, great.
So the two trips that we would like to get approved for next year are to Belize and to London and Paris, and each destination that the teacher that is leading the tour proposes has kind of a theme or an idea that connects with their class that they're trying to promote in this new environment. So for Belize, the trip is focused on ecology and conservation, connecting to a lot of science topics that are also found on MCAS, things that are in our ecosystem but in a little bit different adaptations in an ecosystem that's much more tropical. Some of the educational things that we will be doing is going to a sugar mill and seeing how sugar is processed. We will be visiting a zoo of organisms that have been injured and cannot be released back into the wild. We will be taking a toured hike through the jungle, learning survival skills, and also conservation techniques. We will go through some Mayan ruins and learn about how they were built, and the people that built them lived in Belize at that time, as well as traveling to a bunch of different cities, experiencing the culture and the language with the people that live there. For London and Paris, it is a little more history and art-based. Where an English teacher has focused a lot of the books that she reads in her class on these two cities. So in London, there will be a guided tour, seeing the architecture and the history through the city, like such as Big Ben, the Parliament, St. Paul's Cathedral, Buckingham Palace, Windsor Castle, and George's Chapel. And they will have a tour of, from someone that is, that lives in London and is a resident of there, and taking them to all of those places. And then when they go to Paris, they will have a very similar tour, looking at places such as the Arc de Triomphe and the Eiffel Tower, and they will have an extensive tour of the Louvre as well.
All right, well, first question, do you need school committee observers? That sounds pretty good. All right, let's take some questions. Any questions from the members? They've all had a chance to read over the information. Well, if there's no question, how about a motion? Let's get it. Ms. Beardsley, yeah, sorry, there we go, Ms. Beardsley?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment. I had to wait till college to study in Belize ecology. I was a biology major, and it's a phenomenal place to, it's amazing that you guys are doing this. I'm in full support of it.
Thank you.
Okay, and I presume the superintendent, you're in support as well?
Yes, I am. I think that Ms. Campbell outlined, especially in Belize, the interdisciplinary, it's social studies, biological science, ecological sciences, environmental sciences, and health, and then in, I think, the European trip, there is a historical connection, an art connection, and architectural one. So I am completely in support of interdisciplinary study that has multiple teaching modality opportunities.
Ms. Batafor.
Thank you. I know we've, students have traveled in the past, just curious, those that want to go and maybe, you know, don't have the funds, do we do fundraising to help those students out to make sure they have an opportunity?
Yes, and one of the things that we try to do is plan it so far ahead to also make it financially feasible, and then we have fundraising opportunities all throughout the year that all of the tours work together so that they, the more numbers you have, the more money that you will make. We try to offer some scholarships in essay writings and things like that as well. The hardest part is really getting out the word that we have those opportunities to have those students take advantage of them, but we do have them in place.
Keep us posted.
Other questions? Mr. Drummond. I see, I'm looking at the brochure that was sent. Is there a nurse or a doctor or anything that is associated with this if something happens to the kids?
On tour with us full-time, there is not. There is a full-time tour guide and bus driver that knows where all of the emergency medical centers are located in each city that we go to.
But nobody with the tour itself?
No one with us on the bus itself, no.
Okay, thank you.
But both, all the teachers are CPR certified.
Okay, thank you, Ms. James. Thank you, Mr. Drummond. If I might, just from the chair, in England, is there an opportunity, have you considered whether or not you might be able to incorporate Maldone, England, which is where we got our start? Is that too far? I think it might be too far.
I will have to ask Ms. Marquez about that one.
Yeah.
But I don't know where it is on a map, either.
Too far away from, yeah. Yeah, I didn't know if perhaps someone from there could come into London just to see you or something to that effect, just to talk about our, how we got our start, you know, so, just a recommendation.
Very interesting.
All right, so no other lights, so you need a motion to approve, is that it, Superintendent? Okay. Anybody willing to make a motion to approve? Mr. Drummond, seconded by Mr. McCarthy. Any further discussion? Chair hears none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Would you like to hear from our two students that recently went on a trip and their experience?
Always.
Hi, so last year, in April, we went to Italy with the Italian teacher, and then a couple of other teachers got to go too. And one thing that I got from it was looking at the Vatican. Now, I thought the Vatican was just like a church, and that's it, but the Vatican is also like a whole city, and I got to see the Sistine Chapel too. And we also went to Pompeii, and now I thought like they demolished everything, but they still like have tours going through it, and you can see all the historical monuments too, and I also got to learn a little Italian as well.
So I also went on the same Italy trip with Salma. One of my favorite memories going to Italy was going to see the big Colosseum. So currently, I am enrolled in a Latin class, and I've been taking Latin for the past four years in high school, and, you know, learning stuff from the classroom and then actually getting to see it in real life was just amazing. I got to see more about the culture in Rome and all the, all the people and all the stories that were being told by our tour guide, who was also an amazing person. When we met our tour guide, she made us feel right at home. She was very sweet and indulging. She tried to get everyone to be involved in all of our activities. So I really, the trip was like a great opportunity for me and the other students.
Wait a second, you got to tell us about the pizza.
Oh.
Is it better than here?
Yeah, 100%, but we also got a chance to cook at the School of Cordon Bleu and had a professional chef teach us how to make noodles and tiramisu, and it was honestly, it was like all great. The food was amazing there.
Homemade.
Homemade, all right. There you have it.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. All right, so now back to the agenda. Let's get to the superintendent's updates and highlights.
Sure. Before I begin with our report, I'd like to welcome our new student representative to the school committee. She is senior, Sydney Stumpf. Sydney's very involved in a lot of activities at the high school and a terrific student and a great representative here, and also Mrs. Jesus Waldos, one of her top three students of all time, so.
Jeez.
She, she met a very tall test and passed that well, and we're excited to work with Sydney this, this year.
Great, welcome.
Okay, I'm going to go through my remarks. Last week, the MCAS results were made public by the Department of Education, but that's not down to the student level yet. So we are right now in the middle of analyzing and reviewing our results. Overall, we had some successes in certain areas and progress made by some of our ELL students, by our ELL students in general in some of our schools, and when we compare ourselves to our urban neighbors of Everett, Chelsea, and Revere, we're either leading the pack or right there in second. So we're okay. We have some work to do in some areas, and we will be addressing that this coming school year. As you remember, last year was the legacy test for the high school and the new MCAS for grades three through eight, and that was the baseline. So we will be looking and analyzing this. Dr. Chase and Dr. Donner and I are going through this with our principals, and we will be prepared to present a more detailed analysis of this, of our MCAS results at an upcoming school committee meeting, so stay tuned for that. We have some big news on grants that we received this year and a particular, I guess, pleasure that was not a grant but is very prestigious right now. First of all, we received a $150,000 grant from the Bar Foundation for planning post-secondary success for all students. That $150,000 is really sliced in three ways, for staff stipends to do some work, a consultant, and then professional development. It's particularly focused at the high school level, but also possibly on the transition from eighth grade to ninth grade, to have our students ready for post-secondary success. We also believe that this will be an opportunity to have an outside objective company look at this in terms of what our needs are so that when we are preparing our budget and looking at student success, we'll have a better idea of this. The five New England City recipients that received this Bar Foundation grant were Portland, Maine, Manchester, New Hampshire, Hartford, Connecticut, Worcester, and us. So there are three major cities of each state, and Portland and us are about the same size student body-wise. We're just under 7,000. Worcester's 23,000, and Hartford's 20,000, and Manchester is about 13,000. So we feel really accomplished in receiving this. Dr. Chase and I applied for this in the spring, and, and we got it. So we know that this is going to put us in a position to help our students, and if we get the foundational funding, I think that we will really be able to take off with this. The other grant we received was from the Parent-Child Home Program. I was put in touch with this group by a neighboring superintendent, and when I met with them, they had said Malden's one of the few gateway cities that they are not involved in. This is a program that's been around since the 1960s. We received a $200,000 grant for this that has a targeted population of working with low-income to very low-income families with two- and three-year-olds, non-English speaking, multiple risk factors, high risk for not entering pre-K and kindergarten programs, and have very little program involvement. So we will be posting a job for a coordinator for this. It would be a part-time position. We're looking for someone who is bilingual, bicultural. They will be working with a lot of groups, church groups, civic groups in the city to identify these families, and then we will be hiring two part-time home visitors. Again, we're looking for bicultural, bilingual people to do this. Ideally, I think in our demographic area, if we could get someone who is familiar with Arabic, because I feel that that's a particular group that is, in the current times and our political times, may be forced a little more underground than they should, and we would like to get some help for them, as well as Portuguese, Spanish, or an Asian dialect. So we are looking for that coordinator now. That coordinator will be sent down to New York, courtesy of the grant for training. The grant is over a three-year period. We're receiving $87,000 this year, $80,000 in year two and three. We're receiving $87,000 this year, $80,000 in year two, and $33,000 in year three. And the hope is after year three that these persons will be absorbed into the budgetary process as they are in the other cities that have them, such as Medford, Somerville, Chelsea, I think are some of our neighbors that have these as well. Again, we're targeting preschool-age kids so that these families will be connected with those services. The grant provides books, educational games, and connecting them to services. So, you know, we're going to be working with our PIC staff, Joan Federico, you know, we are often seeing some of these families coming in, and we're looking to, to really make a difference. This is one of those grants that doesn't have the direct impact in the classroom, but it certainly has an impact in terms of rising, it's a tide that will raise some of those boats that I think are stuck because of the economy, because of their language, and because they're isolated, and we're hoping to reverse that tide. The last, it's not a grant, but we were selected by the Boston Celtics. This is the first time I'm stating this publicly, and some of our staff is not here tonight because they are at Boston Celtics headquarters. If you are not familiar with, Boston Celtics have a partnership with General Electric. That's their corporate sponsor, and General Electric has a mobile STEM lab. I think it's like a tractor-trailer truck, and we received a call about a week and a half ago from the Boston Celtics that they selected two of our schools. They're doing nine schools this year in six cities. The cities are Boston, Everett, Lynn, Springfield, Marlboro, and Maldon. And they selected the BB School from January 7th to the 18th and the Forestale School from February 4th to the 15th. They will have all sorts of hands-on STEM-type of activities in the van or the truck, including 3D printers. Their hope is to expose kids to STEM careers in the sports world and beyond. So we're, it's very prestigious. We're very fortunate to be selected. There may also be a visit by a Celtics player is what their hope is, but of course, that's always a little up in the air, but we're excited about that partnership. We, we're just selected. They're finishing up their work in Lynn right now, and they'll be at two schools in Everett as well as a couple in Boston, Springfield, and then wrapping up the year out in Marlboro. So we're really excited about that. We just finished our back-to-school nights last week with Maldon High School being the last one. They were a great success with huge turnout. The last two had great turnouts, especially the Salemwood School the week before on the 20th. A terrific turnout from Ms. Van and her staff there, and they went above and beyond on that one. Some other events that have happened since our last meeting that I'd like to update you on is the five district partnership superintendent's meeting was held in Chelsea. We outlined some professional development and work that we're doing for teacher support. We had a terrific meeting with that and planning this out. On the 22nd, Saturday the 22nd, we had our North Shore Hispanic Festival at Maldon High School. You had a rare glimpse of me dancing if you were lucky enough to be there, and if you weren't, you really didn't miss much. It was like Dancing with the Stars because I was paired up with someone who's actually talented, unlike me. Some of us attended a safety summit through the Middlesex Partnership for Youth on Monday the 24th at Redding High School. Peter Dolan was there along with Christmas Strangelo. I think we had two or three other of our administrative staff there, Mike Champers and Kerry Caponito amongst some, where we had training from the Director of Public Safety for the state. The state fire marshal was there, as well as a number of people from law enforcement. Last Thursday was Maldon's Promise Celebration, and we honored some of the work that Maldon's Promise has done. And as I noted at that event publicly, one of the things that Maldon's Promise was set to do was to, in 2012, the graduation or the dropout rate was 7.5%. I'm not sure of the exact number, and now we're down to 2.9%, and I think that's a cause for celebration, but it's also, let's, you know, roll up our sleeves and get that number down even further because 2.9% is still too high. That's when we extrapolate that over our high school, that's 50 students that aren't graduating, and we know that we can do better than that, and we will. And it's a challenge I know that the staff is willing to accept, and we're going to put all of our resources into making sure that we can get every kid to graduate. This Saturday at Salemwood School, there was a Family Resource Fair that was sponsored by Maldon Reads and the Chinese Culture Connection. Terrific turnout. We also had interpreters in five languages there to assist families in registering for the before and after-school programs, which went very well. We were able to register a couple dozen families, and we were very excited about that. Last week, or actually September 19th marked the beginning of free breakfast at Salemwood, and the importance for that is that is now all of our schools have free breakfast throughout the district except the Early Learning Center. So we, again, are making sure that our students have, I mean, we know a hungry student can't learn, and so we make sure that every student does have a free meal, and that is something that will hopefully give our kids an advantage or at least level the field. As we noted, I think some of our sports teams are off to terrific starts, notably the soccer teams, the boys are 5-0 and 1, and the girls are 4-2 and 1. Cross-country teams have winning records at 2-1. Field hockey is off to a really good start. In recent memory, they're 3-5 and 1. And our middle school cross-country is off and running. We had figured we'd get about 12 to 15 boys and girls, and we have 35. So that was terrific. We also have an intercity basketball league that was started this fall, opened up two weeks ago, and we have 180 middle school students. Again, far more than we anticipated, but that's a really good sign. Excuse me, last week, last Tuesday was National Voter Registration Day. The mayor, Maria Luis, his assistant, and Principal Christmas Strangelo and I received an email from Mr. Stephen Osterer, the field organizer from the Arab American Institute. And if the chair of the school committee and the members don't mind, I'd like to read aloud the email that we received from him.
Please.
It says, "Last Tuesday, National Voter Registration Day, the city of Maldon partnered with the Arab American Institute, the AAI, for the purpose of registering voters at multiple venues around the city. Beforehand, Ms. Maria Luis, the mayor's assistant, had put me in contact with Ms. Carrie Veritas at the high school to determine if some of the students might be interested in coordinating a voter registration effort at the high school and possibly elsewhere. And they did an amazing job. All told, 60 voters were registered in Maldon, of which 35 signed up at the high school alone. Some of the student volunteers then committed extra time at the public library and later that evening outside the entrance to the Stop and Shop, where more were registered. I was so impressed with the enthusiasm, professionalism, and can-do attitude of your students. They and Ms. Veritas deserve special recognition for an accomplishment that helped all participating organizations register hundreds of thousands nationwide. The AAI was thrilled to be selected as a key partner for the National Voter Registration Day, but we would never have achieved the level of success without the teams of volunteers like students from Maldon High School. You and your city should be very proud. Seeing how they embrace civic engagement makes me more optimistic about our future." Again, that was from Mr. Stephen Osterer, who was the field organizer for this. So again, I think it deserves a round of applause.
Bravo.
Just some upcoming events. This Friday is an early release day in the district. At 12:30, all schools will be dismissed. You should have received my message sometime around 5:30 tonight, and we will send out another one later in the week to remind folks, but that is an early release on this Friday for professional development, one of the five early-release PD days that we switch to a Friday this year. On November 6th, there is no school that is a professional development day. Maldon's First Annual Public Safety Day is this Sunday, October 7th, at the Linden Park from 10 to 2. It's hosted by the Maldon Fire and Maldon Police Departments. On October 18th, I think some of our adults are going to be quite jealous, including me, about 200 Maldon High School students will be going to the Boston Opera House to watch Hamilton. It was a, this came about because in October of 2015, Hamilton producer Jeff Sellar and Hamilton creator Lynn Manuel Miranda, the Rockefeller Foundation, and New York City Department of Ed, and the Gilda Lehrman Institute announced educational partnerships to provide 20,000 New York City Title I public school students with an opportunity to see Hamilton on Broadway and integrate the show into the classroom studies. Now it is an educational initiative that's expanded to a quarter of a million students in schools nationwide, and it will run through 2020. Last year, Mr. Damon Alfaro and Ms. Michelle Feiler registered for a chance for the Maldon Schools to participate, and we were selected to send 200 students for a full-day educational program, including a matinee performance for $10. And I think I saw them on StubHub last week for over $1,000 a ticket, so it's an incredible opportunity for our students. We're quite proud of that, and I've, trust me, I've tried to squeeze myself in as a chaperone, but no can do. But we were really excited about this. And that concludes my report for today.
All right, let's take some questions. Anybody have any questions of the superintendent's report? Just if I could, a couple from the chair superintendent.
Sure.
Can we let everyone here know affirmatively that you plan on going over the MCAS results in November, or is it to be determined?
I was going to talk with you folks offline as to when that would be. We can do it in November, or we can have a separate one.
Yeah, let's plan on November. You probably want to give notice, I think, to the other members within the DPTO, and a student representative might want to get the word out as well. So any objections from the committee members? Everybody will be present for the November meeting. Let's plan on that then.
Sure.
Because I know some of you asked, you want to see that, the results, so.
Yeah.
Let's plan on the November meeting. On the grants that you mentioned, no matches required at the school department or the city?
No.
Okay. But the one thing the budget subcommittee at some point should think about is the out years once the grants end. I know one of them you mentioned was three years out.
Yeah, if I may, so the, the Bar Foundation grant is a one-time analysis.
Okay.
There's, there may be some recommendations, and we're beginning, we just had a webinar today, and we're beginning the self-assessment stage of that. And we will identify some things that we see as needs that we have in the district, at the high school, that are limiting our students' opportunities for success, which may, which in all likelihood will have some budgetary impact. But also with the PCHP program grant, that's a three-year, and we hope to fold that into our operating budget by the end of our third year.
And would that Bar Foundation grant impact at all the Massachusetts, not the Massachusetts, I think it's Maldon High School Academics and Adventure Program that they run now, which is the transition of eighth graders to ninth graders led by Ms. Craven? Or would that supplement it?
I think it would augment that.
Augment.
And look at, we, during the webinar today, were identifying, and it's no secret to those of us in education, the early warning indicators, when there are students in trouble their freshman year, their chances of graduating on time with their cohort are greatly diminished. And we know that some of that does not start just in ninth grade, is, we see warning signs of that in the seventh and eighth grade, be it attendance, or test scores, or behavioral issues. So I would see this as an opportunity to supplement some of the work that Ms. Craven is doing on that transition program, and I think also an opportunity to put in some supports and services around that.
Okay. Final question. The resource fair, is it something that you think you'll be doing on an annual basis now? Was it that successful? You were happy with the numbers and?
I, I would like to do another one in the spring that would inform our families of services that are available over the summer through our, I think we could bring in other partners such as recreation, our health department. You know, one of the things that we see in the service areas during the summer, our families are not in school. And sometimes that means, where does this, where does the family make up two meals that they receive in school? So I think that if we can bring in some family resource providers sometime in April or May, I think it would be an opportunity. But I would see this as a fall and a spring event annually, yes.
That's great, okay. Other questions? Ms. Beardsley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have a couple of questions and a comment. So the post-secondary fund, are you targeting, like just quickly, are you targeting underrepresented students like to college, or what's the main goal?
It's a, it's a real comprehensive look, but certainly there's a special emphasis on students with special needs, students of color, students that English isn't their first language. I think that we know in urban areas that's an achievement gap, so there's a, I think already a predetermination that those are areas of focus, yes.
That's great, thank you. And then for the, for the, you were talking about the preschool intervention.
Yeah.
You were saying there'd be no direct results, having been, like you won't see them necessarily? I just feel like.
Well, we wouldn't mean that there'd be a body in a classroom, I guess, is really what my intention was with that.
No, and I think it's great because having been a teacher, and I know I've seen kindergarten teachers coming in, you have students that have never been in preschool, and I just think that'll be such a huge, just great for kindergarten teachers to have a more of a level playing field.
Yep.
But I knew what you meant.
I just want to make that clear.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's.
It's true, thank you.
And then just lastly, why not the ELC? Why not breakfast? Is there something we could?
I'm not sure what the criteria is on that. We'll, we'll look into that more. I know that we had to have a certain number within our application process for Forestale to come online, so I'll continue to look at that.
That'd be great, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Superintendent. Let's hear from Mr. Iavino regarding space and enrollment.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Chairman. The latest enrollment figures as of Friday for Maldon Public Schools, K through 12, 6,663. We have picked up 30 students since the start of September. People should not try to extrapolate those numbers saying that we're going to have 300 student increase because they will increase for the next couple of months. They'll level off right around January, February.
Do you want to add to that, Superintendent?
If I could just add, today's October 1st, and the reporting data to the state goes in, so we'll have a very accurate number on that, and I think Mr. Iavino's comments should not go unnoticed. That does not mean that we will have 30 more a month and end up with 300 more, but we don't know.
Just one comment on that, and this is more of a question and a concern, and I think for a lot of urban districts. When we submit the October number and they say, well, that's the official number for the year, in urban districts that have a very fluid in-and-out student population, is there any thought being given at the state level with our state legislators, with the powers that be, to expand that number, to wait until November 1st, November 15th, to allow the numbers to settle out so that you really get a good, accurate number, a more of an accurate number?
I think that those are great questions. So the state has another one on March 1st, but I think your point about the fluidity of our student enrollment in urban districts in particular, you know, we have a difficult time forecasting those numbers. And the analogy I use, especially when we're looking at forecasting the number of staffs, staff that we'll need for our English learner population, it's a little like predicting what the weather will be like January 10th. You kind of have an idea, it's probably not going to be 95 and humid, but it could be 50 and sunny, or it could be 10 below zero, or it could be a blizzard. You don't really know. You, you kind of have a little bit of an idea, and we see that. Now, what happened last year that did cause the state to take some action was we had Hurricane Maria in Puerto Rico, and we saw an influx of students in particularly places like Holyoke that took in, I think, 350 additional students that they hadn't forecasted for. Now, Maldon, we took in, I think, under a dozen, but the state did provide some relief on that. But I mean, we were, again, uncertain. It could be an event internationally, a political event that could cause a spike in numbers as well. But we do, part of what we meet at the Urban Superintendent Network is to do some advocacy around that because it is important, and it's, you know, it's a, it's an urban problem and it gets exacerbated in certain communities more exponentially than others. And I will continue to do that, and we do work with the department and with some of our legislative liaisons for that, but I wish we would, wish we'd be more proactive. our legislative liaisons for that, but I wish we would, wish we'd be more proactive.
Thank you.
Mr. Froyo.
I just, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to say, historically, after the October 1st deadline, we usually get influx of students from the Northeast Regional or from the charter school. It's usually a substantial number.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Iavino. Let's go down to motions and resolutions. The first one, Malden High School student in family handbook, 2018-2019, Mr. Froyo.
All right, this is the student handbook and I'd like to call up Chris Mistrangelo to take some, if anybody has any questions.
All right, while he's coming up, let's hear from our superintendent as well about this.
Sure. We have a draft form of the student handbook that is here and we are also in the process of having this reviewed by our legal department. We're not sure when the last legal review of this was, but we know that there's certain language on particular items in the student handbook that might be out of date, a lot of the language around protected classes and certainly some of the language around some of the discipline. We want to make sure that it is the most recent because of the legal consequences and holdups that that may cause. So Mr. Mistrangelo has put this together, it is in draft form. The formatting is not quite where it will be, but it's also under review for some legal consideration as well.
Okay, principal?
Yes, thank you for having me here tonight. Just to talk beyond what Superintendent O'Terry just talked about, we've put together a committee in the spring headed by Marilyn Slattery, the Holland House principal, excuse me, that consisted of staff and students to really go through the 17, 18 handbook and look at some areas of concern, areas that needed updated or change. In some cases, it was just, it was just language. And there were five major areas that, that we saw changes, which is really, it's, I think it's an 84-page document. So to have five pages isn't a lot, but the stuff that we spoke about, I think, do have somewhat major impact to the school. The first piece was really around dress code and we just kind of updated some in the language. There was a lot of stuff in around dress code, to be quite honest, some of it was repetitive. We condensed it, some of it was, it left too much up to interpretation, so we clarified, put some real clarifying language in there. Another piece was around homeroom. Last year, the high school went, eliminated homeroom, started the academic day at 7:45. The, the idea behind it, I think, was a strong one, I said, but, but I think in practicality, it really didn't contribute to the overall educational, it, it really, there were some issues around attendance and some confusion and staff and students and parents alike all really wanted to go back to it. So we revamped the homeroom style, we changed the time around it and we brought it back in. The most common thing we heard from staff and students and parents was less connection. We were losing connection with students. And what I was really enthused by was, it was the staff that came to me the most about that. Hey, I used to have these kids 10 minutes every day for four years, we built a connection, some of them I never had in class, I've lost that now. So I was, I kind of enthused that the staff was really the loudest in that. The third piece was, we made an adjustment in our language around unexcused absences to classes. It was always, the student would, was allowed three and on the fourth one, there was, it affected the grade, we've upped that to, they're allowed four. Okay? Because we just, again, I think the three was put in at a different time. Over the time, we've been tracking the data and what we had, a lot of, most often was, we had a lot of students that were at four. We had a lot of students that were at four. So taking into the consideration the change in times, we adjusted with the times. We also brought on some years ago an appeals board. I think the, the reasoning behind it was strong. It consisted of a house principal, a staff member, a student, usually a couple staff members. And it was an opportunity for students to advocate for the reasoning behind it, it was a private hearing. We made it clear to students that they felt uneasy with, with the student in, on the board, we would have the student step off. And for, for a time, it was good. I think it's outlasted its usefulness. So we looked at that, we're still going to have an opportunity for students to appeal, but it's going to be in a different format this year. And the last thing was, senior privileges were eliminated. The senior privileges were brought in sometime, like, I believe it was in my second year, so we're talking nine years ago. And it was a great program at the time and basically what it was, was any student that met certain criteria around discipline, attendance, and grades. And they were seniors. And I believe it was, you know, fewer than three hits on their attendance, overall average in all classes of 85 or above, and no discipline issues. Those seniors are then given what we call senior privileges, which allowed them to leave campus during their 30-minute lunch period. We took into effect that we're in the heart of the city, there are many food establishments in the area, walking distance, students were allowed to leave, they were not allowed to leave in cars and get lunch, the local, the local eateries, come back to this campus during their 30 minutes. Also, if a student had, and we spoke earlier tonight about directed studies, if a student had a directed study first or last period of the day, they're allowed to come in late or leave early. There was a sign-off. But in the changing times, unfortunately, having the students out and about during the day, it just, we didn't feel, we feel, it felt that it kind of flew in the, in the face of safety. So we eliminated that, to be totally honest, when I met with the senior class, I expected a lot of pushback and I didn't get any. I got a little, but when we, when we wrapped it around the piece of safety, they understood. Yeah, the seniors, they, a lot of them get it. They understood, they were disappointed, a lot of them were looking forward to it. To be honest, it was one of those things, the lunch thing, in the first three or four weeks of the year, they all did it, then it kind of got cold out and they didn't, then they realized they were spending a lot more money downtown than they would in the cafeteria and they stopped. The first and last period thing was really what they, what they did the most. But around the student safety piece and the safety of our schools, that was voted to be eliminated as well. Those are the five things that really you'll see in the handbook that were revised from last year. And I'd like to thank the staff and the students that put the time. And I'd also like to thank Steve Frecker, who spent a lot of time helping format this document. We had, we had some formatting issues with the old document, I, many late nights in front of the computer, you know, second guessing my computer skills, as lack, as well as my overall intelligence. It was very frustrating and Steve Frecker jumped in and really put a lot of time in the document that you see in front of you, so I'd like to thank him for that as well.
Let's take some questions. Student rep, do you want to comment at all? Are you involved with this?
I was just wondering about the dress code aspect of it. I know that's been a really big topic around a lot of the female students and it's been like a major cause of stress, especially during, during the summer months.
Mm-hmm.
Towards the end of the year and the beginning of the school year. I was just wondering how you've kind of cleared up that language?
So, sorry, the biggest piece was, there was a lot left up for interpretation, in other words, around, I used to call these pasta straps, but spaghetti straps, and the length of, of, and I learned, you know, the length of, of these straps in, in the shirts, the length of shorts, okay? So, you know, you know, fingertip and all that stuff. So we eliminated that and now we're talking specifics on, on what is to be covered, quite frankly.
Okay.
What we're trying to really do, Sydney, and is a broader theme that, that we're working on, not only at our school, but I think certainly my research, certainly across the country, is we're trying to instead of enforce codes, we're trying to change attitudes. And, and you know, there's been some great work of a high school in California where they've, instead of looking at the dress code, they've looked at the attitudes of the students and, and, and having respect, respect for yourself, respect for your own body and respect for the bodies of others, and instead of objectifying people, accepting people for where they're at. That's a, you know, that's a, that's a three to five-year program, process that we're really looking at for both our boys and our girls. And as I look out down the road, that's something I really want to take up, instead of focusing on distractions and, I think we need to focus on why we're distracted and maybe focusing on having more respect for the selves and others. Ms. Veritas, who runs our feminism club in the high school, and I have spoke several times about this, and we're looking to change attitudes as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go to Ms. Batafor and then Ms. Beardsley. Try it now.
Okay, there we go. Two small questions. One, I know our K through eight handbooks are, they're online now, same thing with the high school, am I correct in assuming that it's posted and not like printed and sent home?
Exactly. When this is, when this goes, and I think Mr. O'Terry can, can back me up on this, when this goes to the revision period?
Yep.
The updated one will be posted online so we can save some trees, yes.
Yes.
We have, we have some hard copies, obviously, but we're going to try to do electronically.
So they just, the parents or guardians are just expected to sign that one page?
Yep.
And then the second thing I just picked up on was, and I know this is draft form, the phone numbers for school committee members, some are incorrect. So we just might want to review that before they, they go up.
Okay, we'll do that. Thank you, Ms. Batafor. Ms. Beardsley, and then we're going to go to Mr. Iavino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, is that a decision that's been finalized, the not letting kids out, senior privileges?
Yeah.
Just as someone who went to high school when, had a senior privilege, it was something that really?
So I can tell you, we, we went about this on, on three different levels, okay? All under the umbrella of safety, okay? We could continue as-is, which even without the unfortunate safety precautions we have to take, I think the idea had kind of run its course because it was starting to trickle down and we had far too many students that weren't either privileged, didn't earn the privilege, or weren't seniors that were starting to partake. So that became an issue around the high school policing issue for our, for our administrators, that was, that was a bit of a burden. But once again, the main reason was safety. The other thing we looked at was eliminating the lunch piece, but still allowing the late entry and early release. And we had some hard discussion around that. What we decided was to go full-on and then maybe move forward and slowly bring back the later, the late entry and early release on directed studies. But there was also some confusion around that because if, if a teacher was absent, it's different than a directed study. And the teachers are absent, there's work that needs to be done and students would come in and say, oh, well, Mr. So-and-so was out first period. So there was, so we decided to go a clean sweep. I think, I thought that if we did it by pieces, it would be a little too confusing. And then we can, at the end of the year, maybe circle back and see if that's something we want to bring back.
That's what I was going to say, if you can circle back, because I think local businesses just giving seniors, I mean, and it shouldn't be, isn't there a new resource officer?
We have a resource officer at the high school, yeah.
So that would help.
Yeah.
And then just something about the lunch policy. I know there was, there was a ton about, I know that if you have a certain balance, you get a certain, isn't it a certain lunch?
Yeah, the students, if, if they owe a certain amount of money, the students will always eat, they'll never not be allowed to have lunch.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then in here, I mean, I don't know, this just seemed like a little much. It said, like, if you don't pay your balance, that the money is taken away from the infrastructure improvements, purchase of textbooks, or possibly hiring of teachers and paraprofessionals. Just seemed like a little heavy, I don't know.
That's heavy.
All right, Superintendent, principal, we'll take a look at that suggestion?
Yes, we'll look at those suggestions and, you know, again, back to the senior privilege, I think that Principal Mistrangelo outlined, it's, it's about safety, safety, and safety. Unfortunately, if we have students out of the building and we have to go into a lockdown or shelter in place, we're going to have a really, it's, unfortunately, I mean, you know, and I grew up here when it wasn't open campus too and, but it also, at that time, there was never a thought of school shootings or, you know, we were ever going to a shelter in place. So I think that it's a proactive move to keep our students and our staff safe. And I know that one of the things we have that's, that's helpful is we have a courtyard that is gated off and we've seen a number of students in there. So I think it's a great way that kids are not all just forced into the cafeteria and that they take advantage of a very safe place within the high school and it's, it's nice in there with the trees and they're getting fresh air as well.
And that, if I may, Mr. O'Terry, that, that last year, those tables were out on the Ferry Street side.
That's right, yeah.
We moved them in this year to make them, the kids enjoyed eating outside and we didn't want to take that away, so we moved the tables to the inside. As Mr. O'Terry said, it's, it's more secure and the kids are, it's fun out there, the kids are enjoying it. It's, and added with the trees and not the traffic going by. And the big piece, again, the containment and the safety, it's a great opportunity for the kids to sit outside, you know, today on a beautiful fall day or spring day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Beardsley. Mr. Iavino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, I want to echo your, your statement on dress code. And it says right at the very beginning, Malden High School is a serious place of learning. And that sets the tone for the dress code. I think what you have here is, is very appropriate. It's, and I think it's right on target. When you dress for school, you dress one way. If you're going to the beach or if you're going out to a party, you dress in a different fashion. And the two should not be confused. So I applaud that. In terms of safety, I, I think that's another wise move because we all know as drivers, adults do it, kids do it, they just run, they don't always look. And if a youngster is injured, seriously injured, that, that becomes an issue that comes back upon us, you know?
And we were, we were fortunate that, like I said, the high school's in the middle of the city and there's so many eating establishments. But, you know, it, it was time. It was time based on the safety piece, it was time to, to keep the, and we've made a lot of efforts around our safety piece at the high school. I feel our high school is very secure, we've done a great job with that and just having the kids coming back in, it just chips away at that security just a little bit.
One other point, if I, I might, my last point, on page 47, as I was looking at it, where you talk about threats to self and others, I was wondering if it would make more sense if that were split into two, that just one paragraph, threats to, a youngster makes threats that they're going to hurt themselves, as opposed to a youngster saying, you know, I'm going to shoot this place up, which is very different. And in this day and age, you can't ignore any of that.
Okay, take the advisement, thank you.
Superintendent?
I would support that, Mr. Iavino's noting of the difference. I think that we also, gives us an opportunity to explain when a student threatens to hurt him or herself, there's a certain protocol that may involve police, most likely not, but certainly when there's a threat outside, there's a protocol that we'll invoke as well. So I think it's a way for us to, I think, also illuminate our supports that we have in our school systems that would be invoked in there. So I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, just from the chair, does this also reflect some of the recommendations that came from our most recent coordinator review from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education? If I remember correctly, I thought they had some recommendations or some thoughts on the handbook in general.
I think we try to coordinate, take what the state's sending down us and then, and then Maldenize it, for lack of a better word.
Okay.
And take the, take the recommendations and then from that, we kind of morph it to what's going to best fit our city, our students.
Okay. And then just my other question, while I have you, where does the possible changing of the start time stand? Is that committee still meeting?
That committee, we, I believe, we haven't met yet this year, I believe, we're, we're letting the school year get up and running.
Okay.
And we'll probably circle back to that, I would probably assume within the next month or so.
And then we'll have a recommendation for better or for worse, probably mid-year? Because if something was to change, it would have to take effect in September, right?
I think that's probably a fair timeline, mid-year, sure. I think that's probably fair, yeah.
Okay. All right, very good. Any other questions? So do we need a vote here, Superintendent? Are you looking for a vote on the handbook? Would you come back, principal?
Yeah, we, we can take it under advisement, some of the, you know, his draft form, correct, Mr. O'Terry?
Yeah, and we're going to have the legal staff review this, so I think.
Get one more crack at it?
Yeah. I think that's reasonable.
What was the date, I'm sorry?
November?
Yeah, sure.
Think you can have it ready?
It just, it depended upon our legal staff, but I think that Mr. Mistrangelo and his folks can probably finish up what they need to on their end and then it's really just a legal review that we're waiting for.
All right, Mr. Froyo, does that work? So we'll come back in November to possibly take a vote on this? Okay. Everybody good, the members? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mistrangelo. We took care of full funding for public schools, so we have one other item under motions and resolutions. This is a request to support increased funding for public higher education. Ms. Beardsley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like me to read it or people have already read it?
Please.
Resolution in support of increased funding for public higher education, whereas public education that is available to all students from pre-kindergarten through higher education is foundational to our. is foundational to our democracy. And whereas, all of our students, no matter where they live or study, deserve access to an affordable public college or university, which prepares them for fulfilling careers and to be contributing members of their communities. And whereas, the Commonwealth per-student funding for public higher education has declined by 32% since 2001. And whereas, student debt for public higher education has reached staggering levels, impoverishing students and families, and preventing many from completing their degree programs. And whereas, faculty and staff in community colleges, state universities, and the University of Massachusetts system are experiencing the elimination of programs, service cuts, and increased use of part-time faculty and staff. And whereas, the Higher Education Finance Commission found in 2014 that our public colleges and universities are underfunded by more than $500 million a year. And whereas, the vast majority of students who attend our public colleges and universities live and work in Massachusetts after they graduate, contributing their knowledge and skills to our economy and our communities. Therefore, be it resolved that the Malden School Committee urges the legislature to approve a fund, and fund a foundation budget for our public higher education system that guarantees all students access to high-quality, debt-free, public higher education.
There you have it, everyone. I assume, Ms. Beardsley, you're making a motion to support?
Support, yeah.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Iavino. So, now it's properly before us. Let's talk about it. Any questions, queries, qualms, concerns? Same process. This would go to our state delegation?
Yes.
Upon approval. All's a favor say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. That carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Beardsley. We're now down to personal privilege. To my left, we'll work our way around. First up is Mr. Drummy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. At the ELC this week, there are, actually, this month, they're having Stuffed Animal Day on the 18th and the 19th, and school pictures will be taken on the 29th and the 30th. The Ferryway, Family Fun Night is coming this Thursday night from 5:30 to 7:30. It's the third one. We did a couple last year. What we do is invite the schools, their parents, they come down for a hot dog, some water, some games, music, just a chance to unwind, get to know each other a little bit. So, you're all invited, if you'd like to come down. That'd be very nice. They're also having a fifth-grade walk-a-thon tomorrow, which is basically just a fifth grade just walking around the gym, trying to improve their talents. PTO meeting is at 3:30 p.m. tomorrow in the school library. The book fair starts the 9th, and it runs through the 12th. That will be after school, either in the lobby or the library, wherever they set it up. Cherry Dell fundraiser forums are due back on the 9th. And there is a district-wide PTO meeting at the Ferryway at 8:45 on the 12th. Ice cream day is starting back up again on Fridays. You can have Buck and Ice Cream, the PTO is running it, all except this Friday, because, well, it's half-day, so you're not going to get any ice cream. And then, last but not least, I'll say two things. Technology, there's a technology festival for the sixth or eighth grades. That'll be held all day Thursday at the Ferryway. If you want to come in and see what the students are doing, that'll be running all day. And PTO fall box tops are due by the 26th. And last but not least, in support of what was going on with, excuse me, safety, the Mass Association of School Committees had a workshop this past Saturday, which I attended. And I went just to see where Malden stands with the rest of the districts in the area. And with what we have going with Raptor and the other systems and the cameras, we're way ahead of the curve, from what I understand what was going on. And Mr. Dolan is a very well-respected gentleman out of that group. It's called NEMLEK STARS, or actually, not that, we got a problem with that, it's the STAR Toolkit Organization which he's running. So, Malden's doing very well. So, it's nice to know that we're taking care of our precious commodities. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Drummy. Ms. Boardnarrow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I have is Malden Overcoming Addictions Fourth Annual Candlelight Memorial Vigil, which is a free event. It is this Sunday in the Malden High Courtyard from 6:00 to 8:30, so I hope everyone can make it.
Thank you. Ms. Beardsley?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ward Five Counselor Barbara Murphy is hosting a Ward Five Halloween Party on Sunday, October 28th, from 3:30 to 6:00 at the Forestale Cafeteria. And then, if all goes as planned, Friday, October 19th, after school, we'll be unveiling the Little Free Library at the Linden Steam Academy. And Salemwood, some news, right now, they are working out details about Friday, October 19th, as Salemwood's official day of Make the World a Rosier Place, in honor of their dear colleague and friend, Roseanne McAvoy, who passed away October 20th. She embodied love, energy, and so much passion for students and teaching. As a whole school, they're going to celebrate her life, especially the areas of acts of kindness, and create an environment of caring and kindness. There are three field trips coming up in October. Kindergarteners are going to go to a local farm. Second grade field trip to Museum of Science. Fourth grade in-school field trip with Plymouth Plantation. And then, grade six, seven, and eighth grade have a movie night on October 30th. And at the Forestale, October 2nd, PTO board meeting at 6:00 p.m. in the library. Picture Day is Friday, October 5th. October 9th, PTO general meeting, 6:00 p.m. in the library. October 17th, the Forestale School Council meeting. October 22nd, book fair starts. Fall Festival is scheduled for Saturday, October 27th, 11 to 2. It's a big fundraiser for the Forestale Washington trip. And October 29th to November 9th is Yankee Candle fundraiser. And for a list of events, you can go to the Forestale PTO website page. And they also had a great event of Glow, the Glow Walk, Glowathon Walk. I think they raised almost $10,000 last Friday, yeah, over, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beardsley. Ms. Batafor?
Thank you. October 2nd at 6:00 p.m. will be the first BB PTO meeting of the school year. That'll be held in the BB Cafeteria. This month starts the Title I Bingo for Books, and the date for the BB school will be October 11th at 6:00 p.m. Picture Day is also October 10th. And the Malden CPAC is hosting a pumpkin decorating night, and that's going to be Thursday, October 18th at 6:30 p.m. in the Forestale Cafeteria.
Thank you. Mr. Froyo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At the Linden Steam, the Linden Steam Academy sent out their progress reports. They went home, taken home by the students. Also, Scholastic Book Fair Tuesday on the 9th to Friday, the 12th. And the PTO Yankee Candle fundraiser begins on October 19th.
Great, thank you. Okay, we'll now entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Iavino. All's a favor say aye? Anybody opposed? School committee is hereby adjourned.